Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, December seventeen, two thousand thirteen, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. A roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to modify the agenda? If not, I will take a motion to approve the form of meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the form of meeting agenda that is in front of us this evening. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next is the consent agenda, the adoption of the consent agenda. There are several items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Member Swenson?
I think you and I want to remove D for a question about it.
Correct.
And F, please?
F?
Mm-hmm.
Traffic Safety Report. Okay. With the exception of D and F, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the balance of the consent agenda with the exception of four D and four F. Discussion?
Oh, your honor, I'll remove four E.
Four E?
Yes.
All right. With the exception of, all right, do you have a modified motion?
I'll accept the change.
All right. So we've got a motion now to approve the consent agenda with the exception of D, E, and F. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And D, that is one that Member Swenson and I wanted to pull here. Member Swenson, go ahead.
My question, I couldn't tell from the written information, is will we eventually be able to collect on this deferred property that didn't get picked up when it was sold the first time?
Mr., I wonder, Mr. Wilson, can you take a crack at that? Bob Wilson is our city assessor, and...
So we deferred a senior's payment for a street reconstruction, it looks like.
Yeah.
And then the house was sold, and at the time that it was sold, we should have been paid back that deferment.
That's correct.
And we were not.
That's correct.
And then it's been resold, and someone obviously did a title search, picked up the deferment, and now they're asking us to release it. Does that mean we get paid for it after we release it, or are we releasing it and we're going to lose out on $2,366.09?
Since it should have been collected when it sold back in December of 2012 and was missed by the county, the new owners are in the process of selling the home, and I conferred, when we heard about it, conferred with the city finance, John Mollin, Finance Director, as to what to do, and we had talked about removing the special assessment as a lien on the property since it was not collected from the person that benefited from it.
But the property benefits, not the person, so I'm not sure exactly why that would be, yeah.
Member Sprague?
The previous purchasers' title insurance, if they had it, would have covered an error like that. Was that explored, as to whether their title insurance would cover that?
I'm not an expert on that. I would defer that to city attorney, or, I don't know.
Roger.
Short answer is I can't answer your question, because I don't know the nature of the air.
So shouldn't we explore that exhaustion and that remedy before we release a lien that should have been collected?
You don't have to release the lien. The deferral ends, but you don't have to release the lien. That's your choice.
I thought that was not what Mr. Wilson said. He wanted to forego getting paid, is the way I understood it.
Yes. Which you can do. That is your choice.
Why would they do that?
But we, so what's the difference, what's the distinction between not releasing the lien and then not getting paid? Why have the lien if you're not going to get paid the amount that you owed?
The lien is there.
And if I might...
It was just not caught.
If I might, uh...
Member Bennett?
Mr. Wilson, you answered a question that I had earlier today about the interest that has accrued on this, which I understand is $2,557 in your email, and then that adds to the $2,366.09 principal, so that actually, instead of $2,000, less than $2,400, we're actually talking more about $5,000, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Attorney Knudsen, why wouldn't the county owe us this money if they failed to collect a recorded, on a recorded lien? It was their responsibility to do it at the time of the sale.
There are many possibilities, Mayor, and I don't know. One of the questions is, did we send the deferral down to them? Was it recorded with the county? That'd be the first question.
And it was recorded.
I think it was.
It was recorded.
It was recorded.
I'd ask them how they could possibly miss it then, but then it should stay with the property. It's on, it's a lien against the property, unless you want it to go away.
They're shifting the air to the city, and that's why, first it was allocated between the parties somehow, well, actually, the seller probably had it, and then the buyer's title insurance should have covered an error of this type. That's what it's for. So they're shifting the, they're shifting the burden to us. I don't, I don't understand why we accept that.
And the city staff did not fail to do something they were supposed to do.
No, we did everything right.
Right. I don't know why you would...
Then I don't want to release it.
So why would we release it? Why would we pass this resolution?
I am putting it forward to the council.
Yeah, for our consideration.
For your consideration.
The question was kind of rhetorical.
If the council chooses not to do that, then I will not be, then we at least presented it to you for your consideration.
I would move to deny the resolution.
I'll second that.
Or to reject the resolution.
See, it's, well, it's either passed or not passed. If we don't take any action at all, it just stays the way it is. It stays as a, as an item that's got, there's a piece, there's a lien on the property, and there's a collectible amount due.
I'm guessing the county, though, would probably want some kind of action from you.
Then you can just send it down to the county and said, "We're not releasing the lien."
All right. So, Member Sprague, would your motion be that we not release the lien on this particular parcel?
Yes.
All right.
That's my second.
In the secondor? All right. And we notify the county that we are not releasing the lien on levy number 14961. The PID number is 29-117-21-31-0009. Discussion? Member Brindle?
Is there any way to know that this is going to get collected? It gets collected with property insurance, doesn't it?
Ultimately, it gets collected.
Or we'll collect it when it gets sold again.
Yes, it'll get collected.
Or property taxes, yeah. All right.
It'll either be title insurance.
Or the, or the present homeowner will have to pay it when they sell it.
Among the parties. It'll probably be a new fact. They may have to negotiate, but that's between the parties.
Yeah. I mean, either they negotiate between the buyer, the old buyer and seller, but from our perspective, it's a lien against the property.
Right.
And it should be, it'll get paid.
I just don't want to shift the burden to the rest of the, I mean, look at all the other possibilities we've got for this to happen. I don't want to shift the burden to everybody else in the city.
Which would be why we wouldn't release it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought that's what you were saying.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Now we're on to item E.
Thank you.
Member Bennett?
Yes. Your honor, I removed this from consent because I cannot vote for it and did not want to do so in voting for the consent agenda. I have no disregard for RJM Construction. I continue to think that a project of this magnitude with the need for a levy increase of five to six percent over the budget to be adopted this evening should have been given to the voters for their review and approval, and this contract represents almost 1% of the general fund. The architectural contract adopted on 11/4/13 was over 2% of the general fund, and so I will be voting against it.
All right.
I'll move this issue.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on four E, which is the request for purchase of a contract for construction management services for the Sports Dome and the outdoor refrigerated ice rink and the Braemar Arena improvements to be made with RJM Construction. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Carried. And the final matter pulled from the consent agenda, is that Member Brindle?
Yep.
Traffic Safety Report.
My issue is with section A, which is a proposed crosswalk at Creek Valley Road and Nordic Circle, adjacent to the soccer fields at Creek Valley School. This is a larger traffic control plan that needs to be, needs to be finished, needs to be vetted. I don't want to piecemeal approve one part of it without understanding the, the larger picture of what this traffic control plan looks like, and so I'd like to, it's not that we wouldn't do this in the future if it made sense, but I'd like to know how it fits into the, into the larger picture.
Mr. Milner, can you provide any information that would be beneficial to the council?
Mayor, members of the council, she's correct. There is some parking and operations issues in that area with soccer, soccer games, soccer practices, what have you, down in that parking lot in Creek Valley School. We've talked with parks. They also understand there's an issue there, and it is a, a good point she brings up to let's address the overall systems and operations and not do it as a point by point like we did on the, for just the pedestrian crossing at this intersection.
Didn't we have a proposal during construction of this street that, that sidewalk extend in front of those houses where they're now requesting a crosswalk, and they didn't want a sidewalk along there?
The crosswalk, the issue with the crosswalk is that...
What am I confused, yeah?
On, on either side of it, there is no sidewalk. So there's, there's no landing pad on either side of it.
There is a sidewalk to the west.
Does the sidewalk extend all the way to that?
We extended it as part of that construction to the corner.
It goes from the intersection to the west, like you mentioned. It does not go east. We put out those ideas as part of that.
And on the east, there is no landing pad.
No. The residents didn't want it extended all the way down to the high school area.
Right. But nonetheless, I, it's, it's one piece of a larger, a larger traffic control and pedestrian plan that we're still figuring out what works there, parking on one side of the street versus two sides of the street.
Well, that's what you're asking for, including a parking plan because of the park?
Right, but this crosswalk itself doesn't make any sense.
It's, it's an element of, something that needs to be looked at.
It's an element of something that we don't have in front of us.
Okay.
So, and that's my point, is I'd rather see the whole thing to make sure where this fits in the whole scheme of it.
So would you like to...
It might make sense. It might make sense in the future, but not until we know how it fits in with everything else.
Would you like to move that we withdraw this from the Traffic Safety Committee report and send it back to the Traffic Safety Committee or to the ETC for further study with respect to traffic control measures that could be taken at the intersection of Creek Valley Road and Nordic Circle?
I, I think it, it encompasses the ETC. It encompasses the Park Master Plan as it relates to traffic movement in, in a park and around a park, and so I would remove section A from this, actually, I would remove A1 is what I would remove. A2 is fine. So just A1 is what I would remove, and then, and send it back to, I think it's going to be a combination of, of Park and Recreation, Engineering, and ETC. And then I would move the rest of the Traffic Safety Report with the exception of A1.
All right. All right. That's a, a good way to say it. You would, you would move the approval of the safety, Traffic Safety Report with the exception that you would like A1 removed and sent to the ETC and wherever else it needs to go for further study.
Right, and I've had conversations today with, with a couple of, with Ann Kethry and with Mark Nolan, and they're both aware of this.
All right. Any further discussion? Is there a second to that motion?
Discussion?
Yeah, we need a second for a discussion. I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Can you give me a little more context as to the rationale behind this and whether you feel that an area-wide analysis is needed?
Well, looking first at the soccer operations, right now there's just a one entrance in and out, and there's issues with cars going in and out of the parking lot, backing out of parking stalls. There's been suggestions, have two entrances and make, maybe make it a one-way through that parking lot to ease that congestion during the soccer games. There's also congestion caused by, all those cars go down that one entrance that's shown, the intersection shown on, on your graphic there. The concern that the resident had was just getting pedestrians across that intersection, but also is, along with that, was the parking issues. If there's less parking, maybe it's better operation. So I think it would make sense to look at it overall.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We've got a motion in front of us to accept the Traffic Safety Review Report with the exception of the removal of item A1 for further study by the appropriate staff and commissions of the city. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And that completes the items that were removed from the consent agenda. We're going to move now into the Special Recognitions and Presentations portion of the agenda. See Brian Olson coming forward. We've got a great award tonight for Nat Balen and, or Nate Balen, excuse me, and Mr. Olson's going to talk about it a little bit.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you for providing the opportunity to recognize the honor that Nate Bealan has received through the Minnesota Wastewater Operators Association. He's being named as the Operator of the Year. The Minnesota Wastewater Operator, Operators Association represents many, many disciplines and agencies throughout the state of Minnesota, and they provide resources and training for operators so that they can protect the most valuable and renewable source in the land of 10,000 lakes, our water. Edina is on the collection and distribution side of the sanitary sewer wastewater treatment system, and Nate spends most of his time in the Jetter Vac truck, making sure that the 180 miles of sanitary sewer that we own is clean and continuously operational. On occasion, even, even beyond those duties, he spends time, just like everyone does when it snows, as a snow fire, snow plow operator as well. He's been with the city of Edina since July of 2011 and has quickly established himself as an operator that can be counted on and to work hard and is a shining example of what public works employee should be and that Edina residents can be proud of. It was not a surprise to me that Nate's here this evening because he is, got a really, really strong work ethic and, and was quickly recognized as a leader within the department. He was nominated by a fellow public works employee and is being recognized by his colleagues and peers of the Minnesota Wastewater Operators Association. So I'd like to ask him to come to the front of the chambers and get a picture with the mayor, and I think the mayor, you have...
All right. Yes, Brian, I have the plaque, Nate Bealan. This is really quite an honor. It says, "Minnesota Wastewater Operators Association, Outstanding Operator of the Year, 2013, Nate Bealan." And really, quite an honor. So congratulations.[1104.23][1104.23](APPLAUSE) I'm going to stand up in front, and Nate, when we're done, I'm going to let you say a few words if you'd like to. So here's the, here's the award. Congratulations.
Well, I guess I don't have too much to say, other than, in our line of work, when we're recognized, it's not usually for a positive. So this is a special honor. It's a nice recognition, and I appreciate it, and wonderful city to work for, and that stems from the leadership at the top all the way down. So thank you.
Yeah. Nate is...[1161.01][1161.01](APPLAUSE) Nate, we feel great having you here, and it's, we're really happy for you that you got such a terrific honor. Thank you again. We've got a Memorial Blood Centers Award, and Manny, for Neil, you're going to handle this matter.
We do. Jennifer Lyons is here, and Jennifer's going to give a little bit of a presentation to the council about the Battle of the Badges. Jennifer?
Yes. Hi, thank you. I'm Jennifer Lyons. I'm a donor recruitment representative with Memorial Blood Centers, and I have the pleasure of working with the city of Edina and the Edina Police Department in doing blood drives. We've just completed, last week on December ninth, we had our second drive of the year here that collected 56 units and in a, in whole, and 2013 year to date, we've collected 115 units from your two blood drives here. So thank you very much. What I'm here to present tonight is the Battle of the Badges Award that for the second time, or the second year in a row, the city of Edina and the Edina Police Department has won our Battle of the Badges, which is, it's what we do for the entire month of August, and it is for all of the police departments and fire departments that we do in all of the cities and the whole metro area and rural areas as well. In this, in the month of August, it's a combination of the units of blood collected at a specific blood drive in August, as well as people that would come to our donor centers and specifically vote for a certain department in their name since they weren't able to donate at that drive. So I would, I'm here tonight with our special spokesperson, who we have the privilege of, of all of your time that you and Sheri have given to Memorial Blood Centers and the support of us since the shooting in 2000, in the year 2000, so just over 13 years ago now. I would be honored if you could present this award for Battle of the Badges to Kevin O'Fidall.
Kevin?
Kevin, could you step up here for a moment? Would you like us here or up in front?
That's, that's good, I think, for the presentation. I'll walk down.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Well, congratulations.[1298.42][1298.42](APPLAUSE)
May I say, it's my pleasure, as a retired police officer, who in all likelihood wouldn't be here today if it weren't for a good blood supply, I would like to give my deepest thanks to Kevin, the police department, the fire department, and also the members of Memorial Blood Centers for doing what they do, keeping people like me alive.[1331.01][1331.01](APPLAUSE)
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
If I can just say one more thing to Mr. Mayor, is, just want to recognize Terry Wilson from our Human Resources. Terry is the one that, for years, has been signing people up, and she's really the, the drive behind this. She started off with just a small bus outside, and when we talked about moving it up into the council chambers and involving the community and going from the city employees and kind of blowing this thing up. So Terry couldn't be here tonight, and every year in the three years that we've been doing this with the police department, Terry's really been the driving force behind it. So I really want to make sure she gets recognized, too.
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah. All right. We are now going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have one public hearing this evening with regard to some proposed increases in building fees.
No?
No?
Oh, yes, the...
No, we've got one other.
It, it wasn't...
Oh, it wasn't on the agenda.
It was not added on to the agenda. These are a couple of items from the Founder's Day celebration that came in after our agenda was published and distributed. We want the council to acknowledge and read in the record tonight.
Yeah, excellent. Well, this was a nice opportunity to be able to praise Council Member Bennett for the wonderful work that she did in organizing the Founder's Day program the evening of December 12th. It was a, a great celebration here at City Hall, and we had a nice tape from Senator Franken. He's also sent a letter. And, Member Bennett, I think I'll let you read the House Resolution.
Okay.
And then I'll read the letter from Senator Franken. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is a, a joint resolution of the Minnesota Legislature that was obtained by all three of our representatives in St. Paul, State Senator Melissa Franzen, and State Representatives Ron Earhart and Paul Rosenthal, and it reads, "A House Resolution honoring the city of Edina on the occasion of its 125th anniversary. Whereas, our state is enhanced by the presence of those communities that have stood the test of time, and reaching 125 years is a significant milestone in the life of a community. And, whereas, the city of Edina began as part of Richfield Township where Irish, English, and Scottish farmers began settling in the 1850s. And, whereas, on December 12, 1888, the residents of the township overwhelmingly voted 54 to 2 to establish a new village, separating themselves from Richfield Township, and after a long and spirited debate, the name Edina was chosen by a vote of 47 to 42 to honor the nickname of the Scottish capital of Edinburgh. And, whereas, by 2010, the population of Edina was 49,941, and the city is known as a prosperous suburb of Minneapolis. And whereas, this year, a number of signature events were held to celebrate the city's 125th anniversary, including the Edina Historical Society's exhibit of historic photos, a July 4th parade with organizations celebrating their own history or some event from Edina's past, the Edinascape's art show, and a historic home tour. And whereas, on December 12, 2013, a Founder's Day celebration will be held beginning at 5:00 PM with an open house at historic Cahill School in Minnehaha Grange Hall where farmers voted to form the Village of Edina, and continuing at 6:00 PM at Edina City Hall for a social hour of music by the Edina Chorale, and at 7:00 PM with a program featuring short readings and songs celebrating the people who created their community over the past 125 years. And whereas, the lobby at City Hall will display a timeline created by the Human Rights and Relations Commission marking Edina's human rights milestones, as well as historic photographs. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Committee on Rules and Legislative Administration of the House of Representatives of the State of Minnesota that it congratulates Edina on its 125th anniversary and extends best wishes to the citizens of Edina, dated November 22, 2013, and signed by Paul Thiessen, Speaker of the Minnesota House of Representatives, Aaron Murphy, Chair of the Rules and Legislative Administration, and the Representatives Ron Earhart and Paul Rosenthal, and State Senator Melissa Franzen.
Very good. Thank you. And then here's a letter from Senator Franken. Dear Mayor Hovland, congratulations to the city of Edina as you celebrate its 125th anniversary. As someone who grew up in a neighboring city of St. Louis Park, I have many fond memories of times spent in Edina. It is a, it is home to beautiful parks, landmarks, and architecture, which greatly contribute to the high quality of life enjoyed by its residents. On its 125th birthday, Edina has many great accomplishments to celebrate. Your city has cultivated successful, nationally-ranked schools, and a vibrant, diverse business community. It is clear that Edina is a forward-thinking city, which you have demonstrated through actions such as becoming a green-step city. The citywide policies and daily actions of residents provide excellent examples of sustainable practices that prioritize the environment. I am proud to represent the city of Edina as a United States Senator, and I join you in celebrating this great city in Minnesota. It is cities like yours that make our state a wonderful place to live. And one other thing that we should note from the celebration, Senator Franken sent us a flag that I assume is now up, oh, right there. Flag flown over the U.S. Capitol in honor of the 125th anniversary of the vote to form the Village of Edina. So that was a very nice gift to receive. And then also, a letter from Senator Klobuchar. Dear friends, thank you for inviting me to join you tonight in celebrating the city of Edina's quasi-centennial. Though I am unable to join you in person, I would like to take this moment to reflect on and commemorate 125 years of Edina history. Edina of today would be unrecognizable to the Irish and Scottish immigrants who settled here over 100 years ago, formed their own village, and passionately fought over giving their new home the name Edina. Much has changed. What used to be a mix of farms, hills, and creeks is now a growing city with quiet residential streets, bustling shopping districts, and a thriving cultural scene. What would be recognizable to those early settlers are the people, independent and fair-minded, but ready to lend a helping hand to neighbors in need. I want to congratulate the city of Edina, the Edina Historical Society, and the many staff and volunteers who made this day possible. Edina is a beautiful city, and credit is due to the many people who commit their time and energy to making this community better. and energy to making this community better. I am proud to serve you in the United States Senate, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Sincerely, Amy Klobuchar, United States Senator." So, yeah, it was just a terrific evening, and I think Member Bennett could go on and on about all the things that happened that night. We had a lot of historical readings, and eighteen eighty-eight was the year that Benjamin Harrison beat Grover Cleveland for president. The beginning of the year was really interesting. I found, as I looked at some historical data, there was a children's storm, or a schoolhouse blizzard, they called it, in January. It was a beautiful January day that suddenly turned bad. By the next day, it was forty-one below. Kids all over the Dakota Territory and Minnesota perished in that storm, were caught walking home from school. So that was just a couple of the things that occurred in eighteen eighty-eight. Followed, interestingly, eleven days after the vote to set up the Village of Edina, Vincent Van Gogh cut off his ear in R.L. France, one of his ears. I don't think there's any connection, but kind of an interesting historical anecdote. So, I don't think he had gotten, gotten the news, but nonetheless, something sent him into a state of torment that we had left Richfield Township. I don't think that was it. So, all right, here we go. Public hearing, we have tonight, as I mentioned earlier, just one hearing, the twenty-fourteen building fees, which I think...
I have, Your Honor.
Are you going to have that? Thank you. Manager Neil, go ahead.
For this item, we did give the council a presentation at our last meeting. This does require an ordinance. These are primarily building and development fees, and by state statute, we cannot change them by resolution like we can our, our Parks and Recreation and other kinds of fees that we modify. So we do require an ordinance with first and second readings and a public hearing, and that's what we're here to do tonight. We've outlined all the different changes to the, to the proposed ordinance for the upcoming year.
Good. All right. Mr. Wallen, you're going to bring this forward and introduce the topic beyond, or is that... You want to just go right to the public hearing? All right. So any questions for Director Wallen before we open up the public hearing? All right. So I think I've got one. What's the basis for the increase, the recommended increases in the fees?
The basis is, there are several bases. The first is, we haven't increased rates for, for a number of years. As we're looking at many of their surrounding communities, their, their building permit fees have risen where ours have not. This is actually being brought forth by the Building Department and the, and they're actually looking at several increases over the next several years, which will get us back into a little bit closer relationship with what other cities are charging.
All right. So one of the things that's important when you're, when you've got a fee structure or you're raising fees, is that the fees relate to the cost of the service provided. So as Director of Finance, are you comfortable with the notion that the proposed fees, in fact, do relate to the cost of the service provided?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Your Honor, we do have, as you, as it probably won't surprise you, we have added to the, kind of the overall service delivery in our building and planning areas over the past year. Part of that has been increases in, in temporary staff and seasonal staff that we've helped to supplement our existing staff, to respond to really very significant demand in terms of plan review and then planned checks in the field. So part of what we are hoping to accomplish with what we call a modest increase in these fees is, is to be able to cover those costs and the anticipated costs of a busy season next year as well.
All right, good. That's, that's helpful. All right, I'm going to open this matter up for a public hearing. If you wish to come up and comment or inquire regarding the proposed fee increases on the, from the Building Department, I would suggest going to one of the side microphones, side podiums, and you'll have three minutes, and you'll get a yellow light when you've got thirty seconds left. Anyone wish to come forward and testify? Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move second.
Got a motion and second to close the public hearing. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And...
Is there any issue not to move this issue without second reading? It says second reading.
This is second reading, oh, so moved.
Second.
All right, discussion. Member Sprague, did you have a comment? Okay. All right, we got a motion and a second, and do you want a roll call on this?
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. All right, thank you. We're going to now move on to the community comment portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and address the council with regard to a matter that's not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. First matter in front of us there is Resolution two thousand thirteen dash one thirty-five, which would set the two thousand fourteen tax levy in adopting the two thousand fourteen operating budget.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Neil.
As you all know, we have been working on our budget proposal and our operating proposal and our strategic plan and trying to align all of those, all of those tools over the past year. We've walked you through this budget a couple of times, but most recently at our public hearing two weeks ago, where we had some public input but no public opposition, I'd say, at the, at the public hearing. This is a, a modest increase in our general fund spending and in our general fund levy of about two point seven percent. Mr. Wallen has, has detailed on the cover sheet just a bit more context about our debt service requirements. But we'd like to, we've had some support from the council before, we'd like to ask you for your support for this budget tonight, and if you approve it, we will begin the process of preparing final documents and getting those out to council and to public as soon as we can in January of two thousand fourteen.
All right. Director Wallen, do you want to comment on the annual debt service payment?
The, the one specific was relating to the park and rec bonds, which are, which, which was a referendum, and so those are market value based. As, as the markets, as the bonds were issued, they were issued with a hundred and five percent levy. As, as we've gone over the years, the hundred and five percent is no longer required, so by statute, we have to eliminate or cancel part of that levy, and that's, that's what my narrative was on the cover.
All right. Questions for Director Wallen on that issue or any other issues that's budget-related?
Nope, but I would move this issue.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second with regard to Resolution two thousand thirteen dash one thirty, thirty-five, setting a two thousand fourteen tax levy and adopting a budget for two thousand fourteen. We've had good discussion over the past several months. Member Sprague, comment?
Just a couple of things. One is, I want to acknowledge Manager Neil's ongoing commitment to technology, investing in technology and creating the operational efficiencies I think that our residents expect from city services. And also, I want to commend Assistant Director Ragaman for this new budget format, which I think is really groundbreaking. Provides a level of transparency that has not been seen before, and also provides some very important information that, that I think will be of interest to residents. So I just want to thank you for your job there. One, one issue that has not been addressed by the budget involves some funding for a program that is, has been brought forward by the Arts and Culture Commission. I know we have money allocated for public art, as usual, ten thousand dollars, but in order for us to get music in the parks off the ground, which would be an eight concert series at Roslyn Park, they are going to need ten thousand dollars in year one to get things going, and time is of the essence. We have Commissioner Peterson, who's going to be leveraging his personal relationships to get us some really quality talent. And I think at these events, we're going to see the type of community building and numbers that, that, that will be good for, for our city and building relationships among neighborhoods and residents. So I know it's not part of this budget per se, but I'd like to suggest that we set aside the money in our surplus next year and that we can agree to that as a group so that they can get going on the planning of these events. Without that, there's, they really can't do that.
All right, would you, we've got a motion and a second in front of us regarding the budget itself, which, and the item you raised, is not in the budget. You could raise that again under concerns of council, and we could talk about it at that point in time.
Yep.
Might be an appropriate time to discuss it. So we've got a motion and a second in front of us. Any other comments? And, you know, with respect to Manager Neil, over the past few years, he's worked carefully with the Citizens League to try to engage our residents more effectively during the spring and summer months and the fall months with respect to the proposed budget for the following year, in fact, the following two years. So continue that effort, and I think you've come up with some very innovative ideas on how to engage the citizenry, other than just having a budget hearing in December before we adopt the budget for the following year.
Mine is always helpful, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so congratulations, and thank you for doing, making that effort. I think it's important.
We have been...
All right. Any other comments from council? All those, do you want, voice vote is sufficient, I think. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. And next, we've got a Resolution two thousand thirteen one thirty-six, accepting various donations. We have a motion on that.
I'll move second.
Got a motion and a second on the resolution that we have in front of us every couple of weeks where we accept donations on behalf of the City of Edina. Discussion, all those...
Me, I do, I do.
Okay.
And that is, I, I did talk with Director Catray today about the scoreboards at Pamela Park. Just wanted to know, just kind of what kind of lighting, et cetera, was going to be involved with those, since the fields are not lit at Pamela. These scoreboards, while they're electric so that they can show numbers and show information, will not be used at night, so there would not be a concern of residents who live adjacent to the park of having lights at night. So that was the only question I had about the scoreboards. They will light up, but they're only used during the day. So, but it's a very generous donation from the Edina High School dugout club of eleven thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Certainly is. All right, thanks for pointing that out. And then the other donation this period was to the Fire Department from one of our longtime residents, Thurl Quigley. Another nice amount. So thank you, Mr. Quigley. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion adopted. Resolution adopted. And next, we have a proposed ordinance on two thousand thirteen dash thirteen, which involves a temporary prohibition against smoking lounges and vapor lounges.
This was from someone sitting in the...
Your Honor, I'm handing you a submittal that was brought to us by a person in the audience tonight.
All right.
He wanted the council to have it.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we'll make this part of the record in this matter as we, as we look at whether on a permanent basis to prohibit smoking lounges and vapor lounges, but what's in front of us this evening is a proposal to temporarily prohibit smoking lounges and vapor lounges. And Manager Neil, you have done some work with regard to this matter, along with our city attorney.
Thank you, Your Honor. We prepared this proposed moratorium at the request of the council. Your initial request came to us in November. I communicated with the city attorney, he prepared the moratorium. We had a chance to share it with you at the last meeting in a draft form, and what, what we shared with you two weeks ago is what is in front of you tonight. This is a, more of a land, this is a land use related moratorium, is, is that's where your authority lies on, on this particular item. And I can, I can let Mr. Knutson explain what some of the details are of the actual ordinance. What I can tell you is that this particular issue is, is an issue that's impacting cities all across the country, including all across the Twin Cities. And there is an expectation from most of my peers, anyway, that the state legislature is going to be addressing unregulated issues with regards to e-cigarettes pretty early in the session this year, as they're getting quite a lot of feedback from city officials and, and folks involved in licensing, and also folks on, involved on, on the advocacy in the, in the industry side of, of the product itself. So what, what we have in front of you tonight is a moratorium that lasts no more than a year. You can, you can cancel the moratorium at any time, and in fact, if the legislature takes action, that is, that subordinates our action, so it would be out of impact at that point. So that's where we are tonight. Mr. Knutson can ask you, can answer any questions about its, its legal effect, if you have some, some hypotheticals or scenarios that you'd like to know more about.
Yeah, Mr. Knutson, I guess, we all tend to think about this as a public health, safety, welfare issue, but it's grounded in, in land use in terms of the moratorium. Could you explain that?
Intermortances are authorized under Chapter four sixty-two of the statutes to allow you a period to study issues, land use issues. Location of vapor lounges, should they be allowed? Location of smoking lounges, should they be allowed? If they're going to be allowed, where should they be, and what should the regulations be? So it's, that's why it's, it's cast as a land use issue. And this prohibits vapor lounges and smoking lounges as those terms are defined in this draft ordinance. I'll just point out that on Section six of the ordinance, you should put in a date, which can be as, any date between tomorrow and one year. If you just want to say one year, that's fine, or a year from today, or something shorter if you chose to.
Is there a preference there amongst council members? Should we impose it for a year, understanding that we can always repeal it?
Sure. So December eighteenth is what's going in there?
Twenty fourteen.
What?
December eighteenth, twenty fourteen.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Member Swenson?
This was kind of on my radar string, more because I wanted the Community Health Committee also to respond to, you know, potential health issues. This is a new thing, and I, what I see this moratorium doing is give us some time as a city to see where, what's, where we are on this and get some feedback, obviously from the state legislature, but also from our health committee. So I felt this was an important first step. You know, what the second step is, I don't really know, but a moratorium on this particular issue, I think, gives us some time for decision-making as a council and a city.
Good. Other thoughts or comments? Member Brindle?
Well, I brought this up at a meeting maybe in November, traveling through Richfield and Bloomington, as I play as a musician in different locations, and noticed a couple of vaping lounges along Lyndale and maybe Penn, and, and I thought, you know, we better have an idea of how we feel about these before we get asked if someone can open one in Edina. So I think, I think this is a good way to do this, to kind of give ourselves a period of time to dedicate toward understanding the, the effects of, of nicotine vapor as it affects the person who is the smoker, as well as the bystander. Having also been close to some of these as a musician, both my husband and I, certainly Ralph experienced a, a guy standing right next to him who was a smoker, and it was sting and, and uncomfortable. And so whether there are health risks beyond just, just inhaling something that isn't, isn't just air, I don't know what, what health risks are there, but, but certainly it is something to take a look at and understand what, what hazards are there, if there are any. And then two, as you say, to give us time to listen to what the state legislature has to say.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor of adopting the moratorium ordinance?
I'll move it.
Oh, do we have a...
I'll second it, and we're waiving second reading.
Okay, wait, motion and second? And waive second reading?
Yep.
All right. Got a motion and a second on this matter, two thousand thirteen dash thirteen, including a waiver of second reading. Any further discussion?
Uh-uh.
Roll call, please.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. And I don't know who supplied this material, but thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We'll put that into our resource materials as we continue to investigate this matter. All right, next, we've got a, another ordinance proposal, 2013-14, which would involve the enactment of a new code for the city of Edina. And Clerk Mangan, you have this matter. We had delivered to us several weeks ago on the dais, a five-inch-thick, hard-bound book that you helped put together for us, our, our new code. And we'll go ahead and let you discuss how you went through that process of getting everything done, and it's quite a fine piece of work, so go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, at Mr. Neal's direction, we went out for an RFP. We entertained RFPs from three different codifiers, interviewed them, and made a choice of municipal code in Tallahassee, Florida. All of our ordinances were shipped to them. They conducted what they term a legal review of the ordinances, and came back with a draft document that made no substantive changes, but looked for outdated statutory citations and things that needed to be repealed, that were in conflict with state statute. They prepared a first draft, which was sent to the city. That was distributed to the various staff members, and the staff members reviewed and made comment on them. Those, again, then, were returned to municipal code, who then brought us a first draft. Attorney Knutson and myself sat with our staff attorney from municipal code and went through all of the questions that had developed in the 600-page document. After that, we moved to the draft, which then, the, or the proof, which came back to us again this summer. We, was distributed to staff, reviewed, and the book that was handed out to you two weeks ago was a result of that work. Tonight, I handed out at the beginning of the meeting, our first of probably many changes and corrections. It was noted as we started, as staff started going through the actual book, that there were a couple of, in the preface, some minor changes that called us a charter city. We are not a charter city. In the zoning code, they left out our setbacks. That was of more concern. If you consider this ordinance favorably tonight, we will have it published, and the code will become effective on the 26th of December.
Anyone have questions for Clerk Mangan on this issue? All right, well, we need to...
I do.
Yeah. Member Sprague, thank you.
Two quick ones. So, when, when, assuming adoption tonight, when would it be online available for review?
December 26th.
And it says in the report, so if we pass an update, it's online, how long after adoption? When we update an ordinance, how long does it take to, to update the online version?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Thank you, Member Sprague. They will post updates online probably within 72 hours of receiving the email from us, and then we will do periodic supplements that will put them into where they belong, but there will be an area in the code where you can see what has been changed. It calls it out. So, anybody looking at it would understand that there was an update.
All right, thank you. All right, so in order to... Oh, Member Bennett, thank you.
Clerk Mangan, for those of us who worked hard to be familiar with the old code, can you explain the numbering system, how that? No.
It's an encyclopedic format, and I can't say that I totally understand it, but it's basically took all of our content and reorganized it into an alphabetic encyclopedic format. And there is a comparative table in your code towards the back that will tell you, if you knew that massage therapy used to be 1341, here is the chapter, section, article, division that you need to look at to find about that particular content.
And the person searching online will just enter key words, and that will bring it up?
Correct.
I mean, I know that that was one of the frustrations with the old code, with finding things in it for people who weren't familiar with the numbering.
Correct. And there is an index in this new code as well.
Mm-hmm.
And then, there is a very comprehensive table of contents in the front of the book, and then every chapter has, the initial page of that chapter also has an outline of it.
All right.
I'm going to appreciate that particularly, because I went through the old code and gave each section its own table of contents, so I could find stuff. Being a writer, I just, you know, I don't want to waste time finding it. I want to know where it is. So, I appreciate all the attention given to this, and look forward to getting it, getting started using it.
So, in order to put this new version of the code into use, we need to have an...
So moved.
And enacting ordinance. Oh, it's a rush to adopt this. All right, we've got ordinance 2013-14, and I take it the motion includes waiver of second reading?
I did.
Yes, all right. We've got a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 2013-14, which annexes the new code for the city of Edina. And we had a motion to waive second reading in the process. Roll call, please.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Mayor Havland?
Aye. And next, we have another ordinance, 2013-15, which is a proposed amendment of the city code concerning the community health committee, and...
We have the chair, Matt Dosscotch, is here tonight.
Hello.
Why don't identify yourself, please, and give your address.
Sure, my name is Matt Dosscotch. I am the chair of the Community Health Committee for the city of Edina. Mayor and council members, what you have before you is a recommendation requesting action and change to the purpose and duties of the Community Health Committee, as well as a name change to the Community Health Commission. The Community Health Committee considered the existing language and the purpose and duties, and decided that it would be valuable, at the urging of the council, to review that and evaluate changes. And so, what we did was propose changes that are in line with the Minnesota statutes that give the powers and duties of community health boards, and that's Section 145A.10 of the Minnesota State Code. Considered that, and pulled from that, a list of duties that would relate to our study in advising the city council on various issues. I think that the main point with all this is that it, it, it changes the language to reflect more of a proactive than a reactive community health committee, hopefully commission. And, and so, if you look at the list of items on there, which numbered about 10, you can see a very proactive, going-forward strategy from the committee. You can also see attached is some of the work we're already looking at related to mission and vision, which would be in line with, you know, those additional duties and changed duties.
Questions here, Mr. Dosscotch? Member Bennett?
Yes. Mr. Dosscotch, the, under the purpose and duties, Section 2163, using the numbering system of, in our new code, am I correct in seeing that language as coming directly from Minnesota statutes 145A.10, with just a change in the verb tense? Instead of monitor, it says monitoring?
Correct. I mean, the, the items that are listed, I through X, they're all taken directly from that, other than the change of the verb tense. The preceding language, the language that precedes that, is slightly different than what it says in the Minnesota statute, but is more in line with what we believe our purpose and duties are with respect to the community health board.
Thank you.
Other, other comments? I thought it was a very good piece of work, and it really gets us thinking about health and all things, and health and all policies. And what better place to start than at the, the Community Health Commission? So, we thank you for your work on this. Does anyone else have any questions with regard to the proposed ordinance change?
I don't have a question, but...
Member Sprague, comment?
I'm sorry. I, I always thought, and I still think, that this commission should be the Health and Wellness Commission. And when you look in the information and background, it even says, "The proposed changes will broaden the mission to include community-wide health and wellness issues." That's a proactive part. And in some of the changes they made to the mission statement, it, it talks about healthy choices and just broader wellness. So, why not rename the commission as well to reflect that broader purpose, just like we did with arts and culture? So, I think it would be more identifiable and less institutional to a resident on the street. That's the only change I would recommend.
We did have...
Go ahead, Mr. Dosscotch.
We did have a, a long discussion on that point, interestingly, about the name. I think that was the longest part of the discussion on this particular change, to be honest with you. And there were several members of the committee that felt that while the word wellness may add some value, that it is more perfunctory. It's sort of, when you're looking at the Community Health Committee Commission, we believe that accurately identifies what we're trying to do. I agree, there's more of a proactive, proactive feeling to the word wellness, but we felt it was, quite honestly, sort of a throwaway word in, in the sense of what we were trying to do. I don't know how else to describe the discussion, but in the end, we decided that the word commission would be a, a change that would be appropriate.
And I, I remember you talking about that. It doesn't change my mind, but...
Okay.
I appreciate, I appreciate the discussion.
It, it was a good point Member Sprague brought up, but I recall back when we had the old Art Center Board, and the, now it's the Arts and Culture Commission. I think the name was, you know, it came to the council from the organization, or from the, from the board itself. And so, that's, I think that's a good way to do it. And you've decided that you'd like to be called a commission rather than a committee?
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's, that's appropriate. So, if you decide you want to add in the word wellness later on, we'll be receptive to that notion, but...
We will, we will keep that in mind.
Like it coming, we'll have it come from you, from your organization. So, any other thoughts on the proposed ordinance? All right, do we have a motion to adopt the ordinance and waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Mayor Havland?
Aye. Aye, excuse me. Thanks for coming over this evening.
Thank you.
And thanks for your good work, and tell the rest of the folks as well. Final item on the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda tonight is a report, an authorization for professional services request involving the trunk sanitary sewer lining discussion that we've been having. And there's been some tremendous work done here. Mr. Milner, this is quite a report. And goes to the very heart of what this council's been working on over the years, and that is infrastructure, creating a sound public infrastructure.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, we get to talk about some of the pipes that Mr. Beulyn is maintaining for us here, that we recognized already earlier this evening. So, a reduction of INI, inflow and infiltration, which is clean, clean water coming into our sanitary sewer system, is a priority of the city. We typically, in our local neighborhood, street projects, address all those INI issues with those local neighborhood, street projects. With this study in front of you tonight, we're beginning to look at those trunk pipes, and we consider anything 18 inches and larger is a trunk sanitary sewer pipe. We have about 12 miles roughly of that trunk pipe of the 180 miles of the total system. So, tonight, stepping back, previous to this year, we didn't have the equipment to televise that big trunk sanitary sewer pipe. So, the Public Works Department purchased a piece of equipment that they can now televise these pipes and give condition assessments on there to assist us in determining which pipes do have an INI issue. The study was approved by council in June, and Boltland Mink was the, the firm we partnered with to do the study. With us tonight is Marcus Thomas. We'll have Marcus present the findings and the recommendation to council on the study. So, I'll hand it over to, to Marcus at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Milner. Mr. Thomas, welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor.
If you'd give us your name again and the address and name of the company you work for, please.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. My name is Marcus Thomas. I'm a senior project manager with Boltland Mink Consulting Engineers. We're located at 12224 Nicollet Avenue in Burnsville. Appreciate this opportunity to present the findings of our trunk sewer infiltration study report. It's certainly been a pleasure working with your engineering staff during the completion of this study. Just to reiterate, a, a couple of the primary goals and purposes of the study, it was to review the primary trunk sanitary sewer system that serves the city of Edina. This system, as Mr. Milner indicated, is approximately 12 miles. It extends along three different branches within the city of Edina. The first branch is along Minnehaha Creek in the north portion of the city. The second branch kind of extends from the southeast corner of the city, and then branches out into two separate locations, one heading towards Braemar Golf Course, the other towards Bredesen Park. Purpose of the study was to identify the relative potential for infiltration into the trunk sewer system, and to prioritize the system for future investigations and rehabilitation work. You know, as we formulated our approach to the study and considered the overall magnitude of the system, again, in nearly 12 miles of a pipe, we were inclined to find a more cost-effective way to evaluate the system. Conventional approaches to infiltration and inflow studies, which are based primarily on flow monitoring, can certainly yield good and useful information. They typically are very time-consuming, requiring at least a year's worth of seasonal data, sometimes more, depending on the incremental results and findings that are discovered. It's typically usually pretty labor-intensive, with lots of fieldwork required for meter setups and data downloads, plus the analysis and modeling of the raw data. As we formulated our approach with city staff, however, we were pretty impressed by the organization and quality of the good data that the city was already maintaining on its trunk sanitary sewer system. Recognize that there was a lot of information being recorded that, when looked at holistically, could present a very good picture of the relative integrity of the trunk sewer system. Some of those specific attributes can be looked at specifically, and help us understand the potential for infiltration into the system. So, what are some of those attributes that we, we paid attention to? This was some of the data that your engineering staff has been cataloging over the years. Pipe material type, there are certain types of pipe materials that are more susceptible to infiltration than others. Clay pipe, for example, typically has tighter joint spacing. When it cracks, it cracks all the way through without reinforcement. It's more susceptible to infiltration. It's actually a, a quite prominent type of pipe material that the city will find in its trunk sewer system. Pipe age is, is an obvious attribute of, of condition. Older pipe is certainly more susceptible to deterioration and infiltration than a newer pipe. Pipe size, larger pipes that have larger surface area, of course, are exposed more to groundwater, and would be, have a higher potential for infiltration. Flow quantities inside of the existing sewers are an important attribute relative to the impact of infiltration on the system. Obviously, if a pipe is already flowing full and is subject to infiltration, the impacts can be a little bit more damaging, if you will, resulting in backups and the like along the system. Service connections along the pipes basically present inherent breaches to the integrity of a pipe. Anytime you connect one pipe to another, there's an opportunity for infiltration. So, pipelines that have a higher frequency of service lines would certainly have a higher potential for infiltration. And then, obviously, groundwater depth. Groundwater that exists at elevations that are typically lower than pipes are less threatening than groundwater depths that exist above the pipe, of course. So, our approach was to create a GIS model that basically inventoried all of these individual attributes throughout the system. And then, given a customized rating scale for each one, we actually stacked these attributes on top of each other to create a hybrid map, showing the summation of these attributes throughout the trunk sewer system. This, this is what became our prioritization map. Basically, this, this map shows the cumulative result of the, the attribute rankings illustrated on a green-to-red scale. Those, those red segments have the greatest summation of negative attributes, therefore being more likely to be susceptible to infiltration. Those green segments have the fewest negative attributes, therefore being less susceptible to infiltration. Now, the results don't specifically identify infiltration. Now, the results don't specifically identify infiltration points into the system, nor do they quantify amounts of infiltration that might be coming into the system. What the results provide is a good understanding of the relative potential of infiltration throughout the city's trunk sewer system. The results also can help inform the city's infrastructure management and decision-making processes by identifying those segments of the trunk sewer system that are expected to be sources of problems rather than halfway guessing where the issues may exist or throwing darts at a, at a map. Important to kind of reiterate that concurrent with the completion of this study, the, the city did televise a portion of the trunk sewer line that follows Minnehaha Creek. And the video did validate the model in that it did reveal several locations of significant infiltration along this pipe. Finally, based on the results of the study, our report concluded with recommendations for the continued management of the trunk sewer system. What we did is we broke up the, the system into twenty-two discrete segments. And there are a number of maps in the appendix of your report that delineate these twenty-two project segments. And we tagged these segments in one of three categories to indicate how we should deal with them in the future. The first category was to include that particular segment in the city's upcoming CIP. We identified about eleven thousand feet of the trunk sewer system that we recommend be included in the CIP. Now, what does that mean? That was basically a segment that our model identified as, as a high priority for infiltration, but has also been field verified through televising or otherwise, that it indeed is, is suffering from infiltration. The second category that we utilized was to verify the, the segment as a priority. Just under about twelve thousand feet, we, we tagged as verified priority. Again, these segments were identified as a high priority within the model, but have yet to be field verified. So we recommend that they, that they are checked and field verified, and then we can react to them accordingly. Finally, the last category was regular televising, which really characterized the, the majority of the trunk sewer system, about thirty thousand feet. These segments were a lower priority in the model, which should simply be subject to the city's regular monitoring schedule. So this is information that engineering can refer to for upcoming capital improvement planning, upcoming budgeting, and information that Public Works can certainly refer, refer to for future system monitoring and maintenance. So with that, that really concludes the summary of our study and report. Again, we certainly appreciate the partnering, partnering with the city on this study. And without the good data that the city maintains, it would have not been possible to do this. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the city council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Any questions for Mr. Thomas or for Mr. Milner regarding this, this report that was prepared? All right, any questions with regard to the professional services proposal with Bolton and Mink that's being recommended for signature?
Well, I just, I just have a comment. My failure to ask a question simply means that the colored pictures are all very interesting. And I trust that you and Mr. Milner, you both being professionals, understand this better than I do. I can look at what's here. I appreciate the detail and the kinds of pipes and their susceptibility to INI and, and understand what the meaning of all of this is. It's very technical. I don't want to pretend that I understand it all, but I do rely on your professional opinions.
Thank you. I just thought I'd go back to the presentation and just show you which pipe segments that we are recommending to do a project this upcoming year. It's this segment here from Xerxes Avenue to Woodcrest Circle. That's where the proposal in front of you tonight would, would address those pipes in that area. And it is following Minnehaha Creek. So there is quite a bit of communication with the residents and coordination with those residents to do that pipe, bypass pumping and everything else. So that's, that's what's included in the proposal in front of you is that, those sections of pipe.
And Member Bennett has a question.
Well, I have a comment. And that is that I focus less on the maps and more on the written report. And I did find it really helpful, both in its explanation of where the problem areas are and also in the explanations of the different means, methods that may be used to address the issues and the relative advantages and disadvantages of those methods. So really appreciate the care that was taken in explaining this. And it does seem that we have some urgency in some parts of the city and, and certainly with the age of the community, in certain places, long-term needs as well as immediate needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And I still like to think Ross Bitner was pretty much the lead on the project too. So make a note that a lot of the data and stuff, he was working with Marcus and his folks.
Member Swenson.
This, to me, looks like when we map our streets as to their age and, and the problems we have. And it gives us a long-time plan for what we need to do. And this looks like a really neat thing for the same thing. And I agree with the mayor as far as trying to keep everything we have in our city modernized and up to date.
One of the things I really appreciate is that you led us to a conclusion in a very factual way as to what work should be done. And, I mean, it's just, it's all buttoned up, locked up tight, I think. We, we were really comfortable with, with the data that you presented, the report that was made. It makes, it heightens our sense of comfort on, on what to do first. And so it's very logical that we, we do this segment first. And appreciate all the work that your company did and that you, you have done on this as well. So interesting that this comes right on the heels of a week ago spending about eight hours here on eight-street reconstruction projects. So it's a lot of work that's been done in a relatively short period of time. And you've done very good work while you've been serving in an interim capacity. So any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I would give you a motion to accept the report and authorize professional services for trunk sanitary sewer lining.
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carrie, thank you. All right, we've got some correspondence petitions. So there was some additional information on the diocese this evening. I think, I suspect there isn't anything else other than what the gentleman brought, the three-ring binder notebook with regard to vapors. And aviation noise update. Member Bennett or Member Swenson, either one. Or Manager Neil, you may have some information too. I keep waiting for that FAA report that was promised months ago.
I don't have that.
Chris Ocker, Assistant City Planner, who is the staff member working on aviation noise, helped me prepare this. Every month, the Noise Oversight Committee publishes a technical advisor's report. And this is what it looks like in November. And we've brought forward just some of the pages from it. It's available to anyone who wants to see the full report at macnoise.com, wwwmacnoise.com. The first, if we can go back just one second, the first is a complaints by city and indicates the number of complaints, number of complaints, also sorts by nature of complaints, time of day, and by airport, because there's more airport in the system. Then the set, the next page concentrates those complaints, showing the relative magnitude of them or the frequency coming from different addresses throughout the MSP service area. The next slide shows, we discussed briefly two weeks ago, the fact that the, that the NOC has changed the way that density, flight density is being represented. And this is for just one week of November. Up above, it's daytime operations. The red and green below show nighttime operations. As you move to the right on the color scale, you're showing greater density of overflights. And to the left, you can see there is some density in those center areas and medium density in the, in the more butterfly pattern, as it were, to the right. But again, for every week, that reporting of density is done. The next slide shows the location of the remote monitoring towers. The noise contours that determine what homes or properties qualify for mitigation are that, those contours are drawn according to a logarithm. So the RMTs are measuring noise almost as a separate function. It is used to monitor the impact of airport functions on the surrounding communities. But the information that is gathered at these remote monitoring towers does not go, does not have any influence on the noise contours or determining who is eligible and who is not eligible for noise mitigation. The tower that is closest to the city of Edina is Tower One, which is at Forty-first and Xerxes. Two, three, and twenty-seven are also located west of Highway Thirty-five W. And those are the only four of thirty-six, thirty-seven that are located, am I seeing it, thirty-nine? That are located west of Thirty-five W. So this shows the distribution of those towers. And information is reported by tower in a number of different forms, including the amount of time, time that noise over sixty-five decibels is recorded. The next slide will show arrival-related noise events for November two thousand thirteen. And it identifies those events by the remote monitoring tower at which they were measured. So at Tower One, at Xerxes and Forty-first, there were two thousand seventy-six arrival events at sixty-five decibels or greater, fifteen at eighty decibels or greater. The next slide shows departure-related noise events. And that also is reported by RMT location. The next slide shows another way that the noise is reported is the top ten loudest aircraft noise events for MSP. And it reports them at about three RMTs per page. This is the page for RMT one, one, two, and three. And this is, and at the right, you'll see what the ten loudest events were measured at decibels. And it does allow some comparison as to what's being measured in, adjacent to our community, not in our community, but at different points that can again be seen from the RMT map in terms of their proximity to Edina and some of the residents who are experiencing noise in Edina. The next slide repeats a slide shown two weeks ago, which is the two thousand fourteen Noise Oversight Committee meeting schedule and topics. The January meeting, on January fifteenth, will have a guest speaker from the FAA. We are looking forward to an update on the implementation of RNAV. If that presentation is not ready, then there will be a substitution of speaker. The next slide gives a little bit more information about that meeting. It begins at one-thirty at the MAC offices and gives that address. The next public input meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, at seven P.M., again, at the MAC general offices on twenty-eighth, south of Highway Sixty-two. And that is the occasion at which people are welcome to speak. There is usually at least one or two MAC commissioners in attendance, as well as one or two members of the Noise Oversight Committee, MAC staff and FAA staff. Finally, the next slides are contact information. I've been asked for that and I'm happy to provide it. This is the, the numbers and contact information for the MAC general offices. The next slide is contact information for Edina's representative on the Metropolitan Airports Commission, Lisa Palin. It gives her telephone number and email address. And she again has urged Edina residents with concerns to contact her. And finally, there's a slide showing contact information for our elected representatives. The FAA is funded by Congress, regulated by Congress, and the MAC is appointed by Governor Dayton and has some control by the state legislature. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Manager Neil, have you heard anything recently about the, the report? We've been waiting for that FAA report that would look, that looks at the issue or is looking at the issue, whether or not we could have a, a manual system coupled with an RNAV system, a partial implementation of RNAV, if you will?
Mr. Mayor and, and members of the council, I have not. We have continued to let the appropriate people know at MAC that we are interested in the, in the outcome of that discussion and any documents that flow from it. But at this point, we don't have anything to share with you at this point.
Thank you. All right, council comments. Member Brindle.
Thank you. I have something Jennifer's going to pull up. And while she's doing that, I will say that I've had, in our neighborhood, firsthand experience with Edina's finest Public Works and Fire Department staff. We have a water main that broke and is being repaired. So we have a street full of ice. And so Public Works has been out there with snow plows, salting the ice so that we can get out of our driveways safely. And, and we were smelling gas. So I called nine-one-one yesterday morning. And Center Point spent the entire day into the night working and finally found the source of the leak. And, and they were just very efficient and, and careful entering houses, measuring, measuring the gas at our, at our drains, our downstairs drains, and turning off gas at certain houses and then needing to get into houses to turn the appliances back on, such as the water heater and the heat. And so they, they were just terrific. So they worked on the water main today. And we were without water for a minimal period of time, a little over an hour. So that's not bad. And but a huge hole in the street. So, so it's, it's, it's a, it's, of course, a tough problem, but it's just part of living, part of infrastructure. And, and I appreciate the hard work and efficiency Gary Wells has been communicating with us, doing a great job of keeping us informed. He's with the Public Works staff. So, so it's nice to see it in action as a council member. We, you know, we, we hear about these things. And, and I appreciate seeing it in action and having something that's being dealt with professionally. What you see on the screen is extremely impressive. This is in height, this is along a hallway at Southdale Center. If you go down to the, it's two levels below the dining pavilion, which is basically the basement. And this is the entry hallway to the mall offices. And they've got, they've got some very nice bathroom facilities there, which is why people are going to walk that hallway. And as you walk this hallway, this is probably easily twelve feet high. So that's your perspective. So this is about twelve feet high and, and probably twenty, I don't know, maybe even forty feet long. But this is, on the left, the excavation of, of the property that built Southdale. And on the right is the, is the recent renovation of Southdale. So it's basically a, a timeline. And this took about six months to do, maybe, maybe a little bit short of that. But it was really a labor of creativity. And, and you can see Southdale in its early days with the birdcage and with, with the open center court with Woolworths, with a variety of things in center court. And then you can see the transformation to what is in color, what it is today. So I was at a meeting with Ben Martin, who is general manager of Southdale Center. And, and he said, I, I got something I want to show you. And I had no idea what it was. So we went downstairs and I figured we were going to the office. And, and we walked down this hallway and here it was. And, and he just stood there and waited for me to react. And it, it really is something to react to. It is extremely impressive. So the next time you're at Southdale, go down two floors directly below the dining pavilion on the north side of the mall and take a walk through this hallway. I was visiting with Jim Bianco at Sign Pro today. And they're the ones who are responsible for this, this wonderful piece. And it really is a piece of art. And this is one side of the hallway. He said, you know, there's a whole other wall. And so they're thinking about what they can do. There are thousands of pictures. And this is, the photographs are really what this comes from. So I applaud the efforts of, of the creative efforts of Sign Pro in being able to put this together. And also the efforts of Southdale to honor its history and make it available to folks who remember different aspects of Southdale in its early days. So, and I have a piece on foam core that Sign Pro prepared for us. And I, I actually don't have a wall that it fits on, but I thought in communications, it might be fun to, to have that in there. So maybe there's a wall somewhere at City Hall or in, in communications. So maybe there's a wall somewhere at City Hall or in, in communications or somewhere that that, that would belong. I think it's a nice, a nice piece. Let's see. The only other thing is, we've referred to it a couple of times this evening, but I just, Chad Milner has left, but I, for one, really wanna recognize the work. And the work and professionalism that he has displayed as a young, young engineer in, in preparing the construction projects for us to make decisions on last week. I, I was very impressed with his ability to answer our questions directly and give us answers that matched our questions, and, and I, I very much appreciate it. It did not go unnoticed by me, so.
All right. Thank you. Member Bennett.
Well, one last Founder's Day comment, and that is just heartfelt thanks to everyone who participated in the program, who helped plan the program, to Manager Neil and Mayor Hovland and my council colleagues who read in the program, the, the readers from city staff and throughout the community. Hardy, hearty thanks to the Communications Department, which did an enormous amount of work on this, to Scott Denfield, Kailan Martin, Jennifer Bennerott. Think thoughtful, thoughtful things as, very technical things, but also very thoughtful things. I have heard good comments from the Founder's descendants. There were over eighty of them with us, more than RSVP'd, and it was a delightful problem to have, trying to figure out where to see so many people on the evening itself. So thank you, everyone who participated.
Thank you. Member Swenson.
Yeah. Director Nunder, thanks for coming back. I know that Member Bennett asked you for an update on the Hooton Cleaners site, and I know that their requested second deadline ends tomorrow. So do you have an update for us?
I do, yes, thank you. As we have for the last year, staff has been in contact with the owners and the owners' reps on a regular basis to see how we can move forward with this, with this project. Checking in with the, with the owner's representative yesterday, I do have some, some news to report. And, and to put it in context, after the city council took action earlier this fall to acquire the property through eminent domain if necessary, staff has continued to meet with the owners and the reps to see if there's other alternatives, other creative ways to come to resolution. The city proposed several, several alternatives, and the owners also proposed a couple of alternatives. Over the last couple of months and couple of weeks, the owners have pursued an alternative that seems to be of their, of their preference. The city has been and is willing to accommodate their request for more time to see if that alternative makes sense. And at this point in time, after speaking with the owners up yesterday, it appears that their alternative solution for their property could be moving forward. I don't have any details, I haven't seen any documents, but it appears that they have found a, a method to move forward with their property without the city acquiring it and using eminent domain. So I wish I had more details, but at this point, I haven't seen anything, but just in talking with their, with their rep, it seems that the alternative that they prefer seems to be doable. I know that's kinda cryptic, but that's the, that's the update.
And at a price.
That was helpful.
And at a price higher than what our last offer was to them, correct?
Correct. In, I forgot the exact date, mid-November, the city made another offer, a written, formal written offer to them again. They had, their number was significantly higher than ours. I haven't seen any numbers or any documents, but if they're moving forward or if they think they can move forward with their alternative plan, I have to presume that they found a partner to work with that is able to meet their number or somewhere be, or be somewhere in a higher range than our last offer was.
So then I guess I would like to make a request on behalf of Member Bennett, Sprague, and myself, that we, obviously, they've asked to extend again the date.
That's correct.
So they can continue conversation, and I would ask our attorney to write that thirty-day extension as the parks have requested. But I would also request that we prepare a resolution ending our request for eminent domain so that we can discuss it at our first meeting in January. You know, we gave an offer to the parks that was based on a very professional evaluation of the, of their property, and that offer would have allowed us to be able to build cost-effective public parking. If that price of their property is at that high level that it appears to maybe be headed for, that goes way past our ability to build effective public parking. So I think at this point, we would like to have that on the dais to be discussed at our January meeting. Do you need that in any other form than that request?
Would you like to make that in the form of a motion? Roger, would you prefer that in the form of a motion to come back with a proposed form of resolution that would terminate the eminent, potentially terminate the eminent domain efforts of the city?
Resolution would be appropriate.
All right. We got a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
We got a second. All right.
Yeah.
And any, any further comments? This is an interesting series of events that have unfolded here.
It's been a very fluid discussion, and as new facts have arisen, we've had to have a different discussion pattern, so.
Member Bennett.
And I think all of us have had the, the, a very strong idea of public purpose in mind throughout this, and I think that is what is compelling the, this next step is, we were looking, we thought we had arrived at a cost-effective solution to a problem that many people in the community have identified. And when the cost numbers change, then it's not a cost-effective public solution any longer. And that was something that I had asked staff for and put on. Thank you, Member Swenson, and I'm, I'm happy to see this next step taken.
Member Brindle, any comment before we vote?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay, good.
I don't think I have anything else, so.
All right. Member Sprague, anything else? Any other comment?
Your honor, we do have a motion.
Oh.
We have a motion and a second. We don't have a vote yet. We're still in discussion.
No, no further, for me.
Yeah. So, well, I, I think from a historical perspective, the, the city offered an amount that far exceeded the taxable value of the property, and if the parks have, have something going for themselves that is very good for them, I think it's, it's appropriate that we think about such a resolution as is proposed by Member Swenson and the rest of our colleagues. So you have your charge that way, and we will look at it again on the seventh of January when we meet again.
We'll be ready.
So, all right. Thank you. Member Swenson, anything else?
Nope.
Member Sprague, would you like to bring up the, first of all, your notion?
We got a vote.
Oh, excuse me. Yeah, thank you.
It's okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who say nay, carried. Member Sprague, revisiting your budget issue.
Yes, so, and I don't know if Manager Neil has anything to add about the, the music series itself and what type of equipment they're gonna be using, but the idea was to have this Music in the Park series at Roslin Park. It'd be eight concert series in the summer, and Commissioner Peterson is gonna leverage his relationships and get talents, great talent, at a very cost-effective solution for us. And if, if we can get them seed money for year one, the hope is to, to try to get additional sponsorships if, if deemed appropriate by Director Tatri, and, and then move it forward on another basis. But they've gotta get off the ground, and the timing is such that if they're gonna book acts and get, and get things going, it would have to be, it would have to be soon. So since we don't have an appropriation, my suggestion was to take ten thousand dollars from the future surplus and, and then appropriate it that way so that they can start the planning. So do you have anything else to add on the?
I think at this point in the budget process, you know, one of the things that we talk to staff and, and boards and commissions quite a bit about the processes during the budget process is to try to get them to, to understand where our limits were going through the process. We did not include this particular item in the budget for a couple of reasons. One, we, there was some initial thought at the beginning that it wasn't quite clear that it was an internal program that was being requested of the city. It was, it was at, I think some, there was some initial thought that it was being proposed to us as maybe a Rotary program, and, and I think now we got a better understanding of what exactly, where it's coming from, where, where Paul is, was, what hat he was wearing when he was proposing it. However, there isn't money in the, in the operating budget for it. So what Councilmember Sprague is proposing is we allocate ten thousand dollars from the, the anticipated, and I, it will be, the anticipated general fund, unallocated fund balance that we're gonna end two thousand thirteen with.
So, and since we've, my, my other idea to my colleagues is since we've, we've funded public art and we've talked about broadening the arts and culture reach, I think this would be a great community building event, but also address that, that broader mission that they've taken on.
Member Bennett?
I would be most comfortable handling this as we have things in the past. We don't know what will be surplus going into the next year, and I believe that some of the surplus that arose from two thousand twelve was needed in two thousand thirteen, both for unanticipated repairs at the arena, and I think there were some cost overruns at the, with the Hornets Nest. And so we don't know what the call is going to be yet for, how much is going to be. First of all, the amount of funds, and second of all, what call there is going to be for them. So I would be most comfortable carrying this forward into the next year and having that discussion when those two things are known.
Member Sprague, could you comment on what you think is appropriate from a timing standpoint for us discussing this?
Well, the thing is, if, I mean, our, our fund balance projected would be in what range, Manager Neil?
Well, it's, we're projecting, we're going to project a substantial fund balance at the end of the year. And, and Councilmember Bennett, to your comments, we knew, we had a pretty good sense of going into the end of last year that, yes, we were gonna have a substantial fund balance, but yes, we had some pretty substantial unanticipated costs on a couple of projects that we were going to cover with that fund balance. We're not really in the same situation this year. I, I could tell you it's gonna be between one and two million, probably closer to two, given that we're, we're approaching record levels in our building revenues this year as well.
So if it were a million, it'd be less, it'd be one percent?
We'll know more about, you know, we won't know officially what that number is until May or June, when the audit is complete. We will have, we have a pretty good idea about what it is now. We have, we'll have a better idea by the end of December, but that's what I could tell you from a decision standpoint right now.
How do you feel about addressing this issue again after the first of the year, but early in the year so that planning could be done? And I'm, I'm thinking of this the same way you are, I, I believe. I remember when we, we started with public art, we gave them a leg up to get going.
Right.
And, and this would, in my mind, fall into the same category, but it would be nice to know what the anticipated surplus is with a little bit more accuracy, and we'll know that shortly after the first of the year. I think in years gone by, we used to know before the year closed out what the expenses were going to be roughly and what the, you know, the revenues were so that we knew what the budget surplus was going to be. But I think we'd know that in early January with a little bit more.
Yeah, I, I've seen Member Brindle a couple times get ready to say something, and she, since she's my music guru, I guess I'm waiting for a response.
Member Brindle.
From Member Brindle. So sorry to put you on the spot, Mary, but you're on the spot.
Oh, okay. Well, promote live music? Absolutely. Live music is a, is a resource. It's a valuable resource. It's part of art. It's part of livelihood. It's part of quality of life. It's part of why, you know, it's part of why a, if you call Bloomington Civic Theater a community theater, it's extremely high-level theater for community theater, but it's why their productions sell out the first weekend. You can't, you almost can't get tickets because it's live music. You compare that to what used to be live music at, at really cutting-edge, from nineteen-seventies cutting-edge theater at Chanhassen, which is, which is a keyboard. It's an electronic keyboard now. It's a lot less expensive than live music. So promoting live music, I'm all over that. Betting on the come, I'm a little bit, I, I, I wanna, I wanna know that, that we can feel comfortable allocating part of a surplus. And I don't wanna make promises that we can't fulfill necessarily, so I, I, I don't wanna set a precedent that we would be there to provide annual funding or semi or biannual funding to, to projects such as this, but to help it get off the ground, I would love it. I mean, I've sent detailed, detailed emails to Paul Peterson about ideas about how to become part of other activities that currently go on that already have closed the streets, that being some of the largest cost of having a, having an event that would require streets to be closed. And, and that, I mean, that gets into a broader discussion than, than you had wanted to have. But I am behind doing what it takes to make Paul's dream come true if we can provide some seed money in the beginning and then look for ways to support them, empower them to, to look for investments within the community in the future.
And can I suggest we look at this the first meeting in January when we have a good idea and act on it then? Should it be on the agenda maybe for that?
We'll put it on the agenda, and we'll be prepared to give you a, an estimate with a little more precision to it.
Thank you.
A lot more.
Just, just one more anecdote on that. I went to Music in the Park series in Apple Valley to, to watch the Peterson family play. I was invited. And the, the, it was a great event. Lots of families. It was right on a splash park, so in Roslin Park, you have that synergy with the park structures there. I mean, it, it was really a nice event, and I met the mayor of Apple Valley. She was a wonderful lady, and they had a small concession, food concession, you know, hot dogs, hamburgers, something like that. And it just seemed to me to be a real powerful community building event. I think that's the power of music. And I, I know that we lucked out having Mr. Peterson as a commissioner and being able to leverage these relationships for, for the wider community. I mean, he, he was talking about a budget of, for talent of, you know, five to eight hundred dollars an event to get a quality act, and it's, it's below market, but he thinks he can pull it off, so.
That's because he's Paul Peterson.
That's because he's Paul Peterson.
That's not, that's not because, that's what that act charges on a regular basis.
Right. It's below market.
That's because he's Paul.
Well, good.
Yeah. So thanks, thanks for considering. I think it's gonna be a great event. And the other thing is, I got an email. Mayor, you probably saw this too, Council solicits applications for Federal Transportation Alternative Fund, and it says, under the most recent Federal Funding Act, funding for TAP is awarded transportation enhancements and safer routes to school projects. So it sounds like there'll be a nice funding pot with our, us coming together on our safer routes to school strategic plan. Yeah, that's all I got. Thanks.
Good. You're making me think about Paul Peterson as a Rotarian. He told folks at Rotary that his family was playing one night downtown at, on a Friday night at Bunkers with some people from the old Prince Band. So I went down with some other people and.
You left early, didn't you?
Yeah, I left early.
You showed up.
John Burnett wanted to leave early, and, and I get a phone call from somebody that was Patty Peterson's neighbor. He said, "You left ten minutes too early. The band Chicago showed up to jam with the Petersons because they'd heard the Petersons were there," so.
Amazing.
Yeah, pretty amazing. Anyway, I don't have much to report out on. MLC meeting we had last Monday over in Maplewood, and we had it in the Maplewood Community Center, which is quite an impressive community center. You walk in, there's a couple of big pools there, and, and then I talked to the mayor and said, "Do you have to subsidize the community center?" "Oh, yeah." Five hundred thousand a year was a subsidy. So another thing to keep in mind as we think about what to do over at Grandview. And anyway, we had Charlie Zelli there, the Commissioner of Transportation, gave us an update on transportation planning for the state. an update on transportation planning for the state. And then we also gave an award to Senator Ann Rest from New Hope. It was our MLC Legislator of the Year with respect to the work she did on taxes. And that was terrific as well. Just another quick touch on quasi-centennial events. It wasn't just Founder's Day, December 12th. It was all through the year with, starting with, I think, the City of Lakes-Braymore Figure Skating Club doing a performance in April. And then on through the year, all of this led by Ruth Valgome, who did just a terrific job, along with Member Bennett and many, many others, who worked so hard to make this a real celebratory year in our 125th year. And then the only other thing I wanted to comment on was, two weeks ago, I think it was, we had a subdivision request from Tracy. And in my exuberance to talk about process with the Shunites who were asking for the subdivision, I think, talking about process, I may have embarrassed Member Brindle. I didn't want to embarrass her. If I did, I'm sorry for that. So I just wanted to pass that on. And that was the last comment I had. Manager Neil, you've got a couple of bigger agenda items.
I do. Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick ones first. Appreciate the council's support of our, of our proposed budget to you. And it's taken a lot of work from a lot of people to put that together. I get to be the chief sales guy, but there's a lot of people behind the scenes that touched that and have really produced a top-notch response to what you think is important in the community. And so we're going to get that done. Office hours next week for the Christmas holiday and New Year's holiday, we are closed on both of those holidays, and we have half-days on the day before both of those holidays. So on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, our city hall hours are halftime. There is a concept that's kind of making its way into general discussion in cities across the country called the Community Paramedic Concept. And you're going to be hearing more about that if you haven't already.
Brett said something about that, yeah.
Yep, it is, it is one of, it's, it's one of the items kind of buried or in somewhere in the Affordable Care Act. And it has to do with how a hospital will continue to interact with patients once patients are discharged. And there is some, some, part of that legislation is asking or inquiring about how cities or counties or hospital districts are going to set up these people that will visit you, call you and visit you after you've been discharged. Because if you have to go back to the hospital within 30 days after you're not, they're not going to get paid by Medicare or by somebody else, so. Fire departments in many cities are the ones that are having this discussion, sometimes police departments. I want you to know that we're involved in that discussion with Fairview Southdale Hospital right now, as they are the primary hospital in our market area. Final announcement I have for you before I get into the two topics that I want to talk a little bit more about tonight is, February 21st, from 7:30 to 9 o'clock, 9:00 AM, is our annual MLC breakfast, our legislative breakfast. February 21st, 7:30 to 9:00 AM. This is at the Plymouth Crown Plaza Hotel. It's a little later than we've had it in the past.
February 21st, 7:00 AM.
February 21st, 7:30 AM.
7:30 AM.
To 9:00 AM. The legislative session is, has got a late start this year.
No.
The first item I want to discuss with council tonight is, is titled on the agenda as Southdale TIF. What I'm looking for from council tonight is some, is some support for beginning the process of, of developing special legislation to continue and expand the Southdale TIF District. As you know, when the city entered into a development agreement with Simon or the recent improvements at the mall, we implemented what was called at the time a, a jobs TIF. And the jobs TIF was a specific piece of legislation that has since expired. But the success of that particular TIF district is really significant. And not only did, has there been enough development inside the mall itself to support the debt service needs of that TIF district so that it pays itself off, but as we anticipate, as we all anticipated, there's been enough collateral development around the mall that it's really created a very strong TIF district. The, the problem is, we don't have access to this excess TIF, and we'd like to have access to it because we'd like to have some more discussion with the council about what we could do with that TIF from an economic development, a community development standpoint. As it stands right now, because we don't have access to it, it doesn't make any sense to have that discussion. We'd like to have the discussion, so we'd like to have access to it, which means we ask for special legislation to be developed, and then we begin the process of kind of marching that forward to, to our legislative team and get sponsors and et cetera, and go through the legislative process. I'd like to be able to do that, but I really need your support and your, your general blessing to, to get that started.
Sounds like a great idea.
I like it a lot.
Yep.
I think you've got a collective blessing on that.
The collective, five nods.
Can I ask you a question on that, though?
Yes.
So the excess from the area was supposed to help pay back the loss of debt service income. So is, is the excess after paying back?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The next item is to talk to you about our, our ongoing discussion about Golf Enterprise and our, our planning and discussion around golf. We've had a lot of discussions around golf, and we've had discussions with consultants, we've had discussions with golfers, we've had discussions with accountants. I can tell you that we are going to end the year in 2013 with our fourth consecutive season where we have an operating deficit at the, at the golf course. This year, we expect that operating deficit to be in the neighborhood of half a million dollars, which makes it our largest operating deficit ever. And as we, as we examine that, we think that previous council direction to staff has been that you want our facilities, our recreation facilities, particularly ones that have revenue streams, to, to be more operationally sufficient, financially sufficient. You gave us that direction with Edinburgh Park, and through a process of inquiry and taking some chances and getting comments from users and park board and support of city council, we have been successful in turning around the financial condition of Edinburgh Park. We're in the process, the same process of accomplishing that same kind of turnaround at Braymore Arena. I think, and I think, I think you'll agree, it's, it's time to do the same thing at the golf course. How we do that is by making big changes. If we're going to make a big change at the golf course, we've got to make a number of big changes in the way we operate the Golf Enterprise. One of those big changes, I believe, after examining a lot of different options, is to contract, is to contract our operations. And I think that when I say contract our operations, I mean that we should look at the Fred Richards Golf Course and we should repurpose that golf course. We should take the operations, the golfing operations that currently exist at Fred Richards Golf Course, and we should figure out how to move them at, at the end of the 2014 season. We should figure out how to move them in an orderly way, in a way that golfers can appreciate to Braymore Golf Course. We've done some initial analysis to show that if we did such a thing, we'd make a very significant decrease in our, in our operating costs, and we would move a fair percentage, and we think it's a minimum of 50% of the operating revenues from Fred Richards would move to Braymore Golf Course. That's just one aspect of, of a larger plan that includes looking at the way we operate the ancillary services at our golf courses, looking at how much, how we charge for golf, how we discount golf prices, how we set our prices, and how, maybe most importantly, we increase the number of rounds we sell there by not only looking at our price structure, but also by making pretty significant investments in, in Braymore Golf Course. Investments that are going to drive more rounds, more players, more rounds, more players playing more rounds. That's going to be the secret to getting our, our round sold numbers back up to what they were maybe five or six years ago in an environment that sees the number of rounds we sell every year going down every year. In order to get this process started, what I'm looking for from council tonight is, is again, sort of a, I think, a general level of, of support for staff to begin a public engagement process around the Fred Richards Golf Course. I'm not asking you tonight to approve the closure of the Fred Richards Golf Course. Let me be very clear about that. But what I am asking council members tonight is to give staff the, the go-ahead to begin an engagement process with the public. And you might read that as just the neighbors or just the golfers, but I'm saying the general public that uses Fred Richards Golf Course is really who we're, we want to hear from. And to engage them, to show them our presentation about the, the big picture that we're trying to address, to engage them in a discussion about what it would take and what kind of things do we need to do to make a, a transition from Fred Richards Golf Course to Braymore Golf Course comfortable and enjoyable for them, should the council approve that at some point in the future. We'd also want to have a parallel process that talks about the future of that 42 acres and what kind of, of, of future that, that very important piece of land has to us. It's bordered, of course, by Pentagon Park. It's bordered by a number of, of private homes. It could have a great deal of benefit from an environmental standpoint if we, if we engage also at the same time the watershed district. We know that we're going to have a regional trail come through that facility. So we've got a lot of things in the air right now outside of just golf that could be, could be influencing the future of that piece of land. So that's, I guess, what I'm asking for from you tonight. I, I want to be careful about how I position the council on this discussion because in the end, what we'd like to do is to gather information from residents. We'd like to gather recommendations from, from the park board, like we did in the Edinburgh Park process, and ultimately bring a, bring a, a larger, more comprehensive plan back to the council very early in 2014 for an approval that we could begin the process of talking about planning and implementing in 2014 for, for operational implementation in 2015. That's kind of the general timeframe that we're talking about here. We're not the only municipal golf course in the Twin Cities, or maybe in America, that are talking about how we, how we respond to changes in the golf industry. Brooklyn Park has done something pretty similar just a few weeks ago. So this is what I'm asking for you tonight and be happy to, I'm interested in getting some feedback from you on this.
Member Swenson?
I know the answer, but I want it heard publicly. That when we talk about potentially repurposing those 42 acres that are known as Fred Richards today, we're talking about it staying as public space, correct?
Councilmember Swenson, members of the council and members of the public, yes. I mean, that's, my, my proposal to you would be that, that remain a public use, that it's, it may be repurposed into a park or open space or some other kind of open use.
Or whatever, but it's, yes.
Yeah.
We aren't talking about, you know, putting it on the market or doing anything else.
We are not.
I just, I think, no, no, no.
That won't be part of my plan.
I thought that needed to be really clear, so thank you.
There are plenty of rumors out there to that effect, so I think it's important that be out there.
Okay, oh, there are, okay, thank you, Mary.
Member Sprague?
I'd also like to dispel the notion that we would be interested in somehow connecting the neighborhood over to 76 via a street. What we want to do is make that buffer that's, that's not widely used more into a broader public amenity. So I think the buffer will remain, but we want, I think there's a higher use for that land than what we have right now for the general public. And we talk about the general park user not having as many things to do sometimes. We have these niche stuff facilities, and this is a great opportunity to engage that, that general park user, along with the operational efficiencies that kind of follows the chart of work we've been working on with the enterprise facilities. So I would, I would be supportive and would move directing staff to engage the public on this issue.
Thank you. Member Bennett?
I think it's very important that the public have information. I know that staff has had some, our report has been prepared. I know that you've spoken with staff, and I think that information will be very important for people to understand, the trends, the, the finances. I believe that we saw in the Quality of Life survey that only 25% of the respondents to that survey had visited Fred Richards there or anybody from their household in the last year. So it's important to know where the users are coming from, not that we aren't welcoming to people from other communities, but I think it's important to know how community resources are being allocated and enjoyed also within the community. And then I, I think in terms of process, I support the involvement of the golfing community in the consideration of Fred Richards Golf Course and what happens with golf operations. I also support the involvement of the greater community in terms of if Fred Richards is, Golf Course is repurposed, what it's repurposed as, because I think, given its location near, near the freeways, also buffering a neighborhood as it has, but with other neighborhoods to the south and to the east, that it's important that the greater community be involved in a discussion of what the, the future and future uses would be.
Great. Member Brindle, any thoughts on this issue?
No, it was really, I, I think I just echo what Member Swenson said, having gotten calls from people who were, you know, rumors fly and, and they become more and more believable or unbelievable, but, but certainly not this, the, the comment that I have made to residents when they have asked is, whether it's a golf course or not, it will still remain a park. And, and so that tends to quiet the discussion. But, but I think that, that needs to be part of the opening statement in inviting comment, so.
All right. For me, I would say the type of process we have is really critical. That if undergirding a public process, there's a sense that the outcome is predetermined. It's not really a true public process. And that's what I worry about in, in how we go about this work. Because for me, terminating golf operations at Fred Richards is not a fait accompli. We have had four years of operating losses, you know, some of them significant as we had in 2013, but it was about as aberrational a year as you're going to find. We know one of the reasons Edinburgh was successful was because there were, there were families in there enjoying Edinburgh in Jan, in June. And so that speaks to what we had happen at the golf course, where we usually run 65,000 rounds, we're running 45,000 rounds. Well, it's all weather-related. And these other years where we've had losses, they have not been significant losses. And, and as I sit up here as a steward of the community and everybody else too, I think is that, we, we think that while we should be operating these, these enterprises on business principles, it doesn't necessarily mean that they have to make a profit. We've all made investments in these enterprises as a community. And I just think we need to be really careful about how we go about this process of discussing golf, golf operations on a broad basis and not have people worrying right off the bat that their voice doesn't matter, because their voice does matter. For, for staff, you've made some comments tonight that are way ahead of where we are. We don't know what you've been working on. You, you've got to make the case to the public.
Yep.
You've got to make the case to the park board. When the park board takes this on, they've got to get input from the public, and you've got to make the case to us before any changes get made. So I just say, be really careful about the kind of process we initiate here. It's an important discussion to have. It's an appropriate discussion to have. And all the points made by my colleagues are really good ones, but I just say that make sure that whatever process we create is a process where the voice of the people concerned matter. And they don't get a sense that this is a preordained proposition and they're, it's just window dressing is the effort we're going through. That's really critical, in my opinion. So what are we doing next? Did that help you at all?
Yes, it did. And I don't need a vote or anything. I just wanted to get a sense of where you were. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else?
No. No.